Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled hearing of the zoning board of appeals. A few basic ground rules. If you've got a cellphone or electronic device, please put it on mute. If you are going to speak on an application, have any comments on an application, please step up to the microphone, give your name for the record, and please don't speak from the audience. If we close an application tonight, we will generally deliberate on that application at the end of the hearing. You can stay for that. You cannot participate. We can't have audience commentary during the deliberation. We generally follow the agenda as posted on the door. Unfortunately, we had some scheduling conflicts which forced us to amend the schedule, and those conflicts got resolved before this hearing started. So, we are actually starting with calendar number seven, 2019, first, and then we will start back in with the regular sequence of calendars, calendars number four, five, and six. If you, if we do deliberate and make a decision and you choose not to stay, you can always call Woody in the morning, and he can give you an update as to what happened. With nothing further unless I miss something?
I want to announce that we're covered by the local TV station?
Yeah, all of this is on channel seventy-nine and...
It's live. They can go home?
It is live, and I guess you could go home and watch as well. With all of that, we'll start with calendar number seven, 2019, the application of Chris Noe, 242 Old Kings Highway South.
My name's Chris Noe, 242 Old Kings Highway South. I've got a blight complaint by the town of Darien, and the number one thing on the list is my burned-up back porch. It's been like that for twelve years, and I need your consideration to allow me to take down the burnt part and put it back, basically the same way it is.
Okay. Did you, did you talk to staff? There were some deficiencies in your application.
I, I had also applied to subdivide the property, and I needed a, I needed a new map, and I've got a guy working on that, but that won't be ready for three weeks. So...
Okay.
But that's not part, that's not part of this evening. I mean, I'm anxious to get moving. You know, I really don't want any delays. You won't get any delays from me, and I hope I don't.
Woody, have you seen the subdivision proposal?
Roughly.
Would it affect the setback areas that are called out in this notice?
No.
I don't know. Maybe. I don't think so, but...
It's a separate part of their property?
The property is like a, it's kind of shaped like a slice of pizza, and the house is stuck down the skinny end, the pointed end, and all the other piece would come off the end. So, there's no, you know, with what's, what's going on to repair the fire damage, it's all existing stuff. It's been there for twenty-four years. It just needs to get rebuilt.
Yeah, so, some of the things, some of the deficiencies that were noted, first and foremost was payment of the application fee. Can you explain that?
Yeah, I was, you know, I was ordered by the, by the blight committee to file applications to all boards. And my last application that I completed with the town of Darien, I forgot what it was. It might not have been you guys. Thinking on it back, I think it might have been EPC. But I worked on that application for a year, and, you know, brought in new maps and everything that was required as you go through the application.
Right.
And at the end of it, they told me that I had a completed application, and they refused to make a decision, yes or no. And that's where it ended. So, I kind of, that's why the place has kind of been sitting for years, because, you know, when you get that kind of result from a year's worth of your time, it's really hard to come walking in here and start shelling out fees and having an open mind. But, you know, I, I'm anxious to get this thing.
I can't speak to the other boards, but that's not, that's not how we operate.
Oh, that's good.
We do make decisions.
That's good.
And, but the problem is, with the application that you've submitted, you've made it really tough for us to make decisions. So, a lot of things we look at are elevations, designs, you know, I don't know how much staff has explained to our process, but the first thing we have to find is a hardship on your property. And it has to be unique in nature to your property. Once we find that hardship, we have to look at what you're asking to build and see if that's the minimum adjustment necessary in order to grant the variance. And in this case, we've got some information. We've got a map with a redacted preparer, which is something that doesn't work for us, because the, the reason is, we need to know who prepared it and who's standing behind the accuracy of that map.
I understand.
And so, without, without a certified map, you know, it makes it hard for us to proceed. Without a set of elevations, it makes it hard for us to proceed, because we can't tell what, what you want to build. And we could say it's the exact same thing. Woody could tell you this. I think the rest of the board members could tell you this. We've had many applications who have come in and said, "I want to build the exact same thing that's there." And then we get the plans for the building, and it's completely different.
I'm not going to do that to you.
So, we need to, no, no, but we need to approve something, right? So, we need to see those plans. We need to see what you want to build to approve that.
I got it.
And so, without that, you've really made it hard for us to say, "Yeah, we would approve that," or "No, we wouldn't," tonight. So, what I would suggest, if, what I would think would be appropriate would be to continue your application, get you on the next regularly-scheduled hearing.
Okay.
And work with Woody to fill in the gaps in the, in the, in the application. Further to that, what I would suggest, Woody, is we get something from town council as to, you know, where, where the, where the application fee hasn't been paid. If we can actually go ahead and proceed with the hearings, there's, I think the issue you're saying is, you've been ordered to come here, so why should you pay a fee? Is that, is that...
You know, I don't, I don't have a problem paying the fees.
Okay.
But, I mean, but I haven't, but I explained it earlier.
Sure.
I've been ordered to come here.
Right.
The last time I went through this whole process, I was left with nothing.
Right.
Okay, so, it's all different people. Dave Keating isn't here anymore, or he's still in the building, but he's not here tonight. The lot of the problem was, was that man, and so, he's not here. He's part of it. So, I think there's a, I have a better chance, perhaps. But, you know, I, I like to use my time wisely.
Sure.
And if, you know, if, you know, I've got a lot to do with the house. I mean, I've been working on it like crazy, trying to get things, you know, better. There's a lot of years I just really didn't care, and I still don't, but I'm trying to do it, just because it needs to get done.
Okay.
So, you know, for the betterment of the neighborhood and the betterment of, you know, some of the people around me, like a guy across the street is trying to sell his house, you know, I'm, I'm anxious to proceed as quickly as I can.
Okay.
Okay, so, if I can get back here with the map for the subdivision, and I can get here with the, you just want a drawing, a construction drawing like that?
We need construction drawings, because that becomes part of the file, so if we approve it.
Okay.
That's what, the building, sorry, that's what the building office looks to say, "Did you comply with the variance that we granted?"
These, these, if the, if Woody has, if they keep records from previous applications, the porch was approved. I needed approvals by three boards, and I didn't get, I didn't get it by EPC. They wanted this giant easement, about three-quarters of my property, and I couldn't agree to that.
Okay.
And so, the thing stalled, and, you know, you have a limited amount of time before this permit goes dead, and that's what happened to me. So, this, this board previously has approved this plan, and they had all the drawings, and they're probably in the file someplace. I might have them, but I kind of doubt it. I had a fire in my house and the, you know, everything. It's just kind of chaos.
Excuse me, Mr. Noe. I did find them in the previous...
Did you?
So, we can copy those and include them with your application materials and get ready. May fifteen would be the board's next opportunity.
Okay.
Pick this up, and maybe by then you have your updated survey.
Okay. If, you know, he was, that was a stretch that he could even have it done by then. I was going to try to find some other, some other contacts. But, okay, so if I can't...
Excuse me, can I ask a question? In this previous situation, were you asking for a subdivision too?
No.
So, are we going to deal with one thing at a time?
I think they're both.
Subdivision won't come to us.
Well, in this case, it's like...
But any setback issue?
Well, because of the lot area and lot...
Well, that's what I asked, if the subdivision impacts this.
It does.
It does? Okay. But I was told, no.
Well, the, what, what happens is, is the lot that the existing house will be sitting on is less than a third. It's, instead of point three-three, it's point two-nine. So, it's just a little bit less. But it's, I'm up against open space, and I don't know, it's...
So, you'd be creating a non, you have a conforming lot in size, and you'd be creating a non-conforming lot.
I would have, right, that's correct. It would be a smaller lot.
I don't think we have the power to...
We wouldn't grant, we don't grant subdivisions.
Yeah.
So, it's subdivision application would go through...
Well, it has to go to P&amp;Z, but apparently it had to go to you guys first. That's what, that's what Jeremy told me.
We would just do the house part, the lot that your house is on. That's the thing that we would be concerned with.
Right, right. Well, it's on the map. The house is eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet. I mean, the house is very small. With this back porch, if I could put that back on, the house would be a thousand square feet. It's very, very small. So, when you have a quarter-acre lot, there's still tons of, tons of land. I mean, it's not, it's not crowded in any, any way. It's really not.
So, so, a couple of the things, there were noted, I don't know if you saw the staff notes, but there were noted in the staff notes a couple of non-permitted, non-conforming structures, as well as some blight issues.
Yeah, the blight, that's what I'm working on.
If, if we were to grant your variance request with stipulations to cure those issues, is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Um, yeah, I want, I want to resolve everything. I mean, it's, 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 but you guys, I mean, I guess we're not making those decisions tonight.
No, we're not. And, and, and the subdivision, Woody, I'd like to get, I, I'm not even sure we can grant a variance to create a subdivision. I, I don't think we can. So, I'd like, I have two questions for town council.
Sure.
One is, is can we do that? And that would save you a lot of time, money, energy, right? If we can't do it, then, then there's no point in you bringing it back to us. And the other is, is the, whether we can rule on an application where there are these violations that are, that are currently existing. I understand that Mr. Noe was sent here by the blight board to resolve some of this, so maybe that, maybe that solves it.
See, my, my question relating to subdivision is, if it's kind of, if there's a subdivision application, shouldn't P&amp;Z hear that first, so we know the lot that we are reviewing for the proposed variance?
Right, correct.
So, I think that goes first. I don't know why it goes second.
Jeremy said it went...
So, we're...
We need, somebody needs to tell us what.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. We totally have, but I missed the topic.
Yeah, and, and to your point, I don't want to waste a lot of your time and energy running around trying to get something that can't be approved, right?
I, I get that.
Yep.
You also wanted to ask council about the fee, whether it's waived or not.
Yeah, and I, and I think that there's a, there's an argument where he's, he's sent here by the blight board that the fee might, might be waived in that situation where another board is requiring that he come here. I'm not sure if that's the case. That's why I want town council's opinion. So, I, yeah, I've got three, three items for council to, to give us some guidance on. And I don't know, let me ask you, just to further complicate the issue, does that have to be, does he have to come to the public hearing and present that, or can he just do a memo to the file?
No, I think we can, I think we can resolve those several questions with council before we proceed, and May fifteen again would be the, May fifteenth is the...
Okay, so I'm going to try to get everything, everything together for May fifteen.
Wait until we hear from town council on the subdivision.
Right.
Because if you can't, I mean, surveyors cost money, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, if, if you spend the money on a survey that you can't use, it's a waste of money. So, let's, let's resolve that as quickly as possible.
He would still need an updated survey even to present the P&amp;Z, so...
Correct.
You might as well do proceed with that. That's a valuable document.
Well, I think, I think, you know, it's what Jeremy told me, is it had to be here first. So, I'm going to kind of keep going on that, but you might, you know, you guys are going to check it out. I might hear something different. But, okay, so I'm going to try to get you, basically, I just need the...
Plans and a cer, and a survey for this application.
Woody says he has the drawings on file.
Yep.
Okay, so if I can borrow a set of those, I'll get...
Yeah, they're the same as you presented in ninety-six.
It's exactly, yeah, it's the same.
Perfect.
The, I mean, I'd love to change it, but it just, there's only, there's one end of the building that got fire damage, so there's just, you don't have to, you don't have to rebuild the whole thing. It's just the fire. The fire, you know, was December eighth. The fire department was selling Christmas trees up at the Narromine Heights Fire Department. They were the house in two seconds and put it out. Guys are phenomenal. So, but, but there's still, there was, you know, there was substantial damage, and I was, I was able to fix the house, so, so, but...
Okay.
But, thank you for your, thank you for your...
Thanks for coming out, Tony. Appreciate it. So, Woody, we're going to continue that till the May fifteenth, right? Okay. Oh, sorry. Before I continue that, was there any, anyone from the audience that wanted to be heard on that application? Okay, good. Thank God.
Chairman, someone else?
We do, yes. Please come forward.
I think this sounds probably best to wait till the next hearing.
That's, yeah, especially since Mr. Noe has left and may not be able to answer your questions.
Perhaps.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, back to the beginning of our agenda, calendar number four, 2019, PB Architects for thirty Fairmead Road.
Good evening. My name is Yasek Bigoszinski, PB Architects. With me is Jean Strabels-Hideau and her partner, Erin Stein, and some two lovely kids, reading books, not because they're bored, real books. Anyway, so, here's my presentation. I'm sorry, I... Okay, so what we have is a existing lot that's legally non-conforming. The lot is undersized. It's seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine square feet in lieu of forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty. So, it's almost half the size. It's a narrow lot with three forty-foot yard setbacks and one-twenty-five. Existing house is mostly over the, over the required setback lines, and you can see it here highlighted in yellow. That's where the existing house is. It's still there, though, you know, eventually, we hope, if this gets approved, it's going to come down. But you can see how, how it actually extends over the setback lines. The red lines here, you can see this, they're building it along with the setbacks as, as required. So, the proposed house is actually totally within setback lines, okay? All the living spaces are within the setback lines. What we are asking for in terms of the variance is a wood deck, which you can see here, and it's magenta, and there is a walkway. Part of the challenge with this lot is the fact that it just literally drops off. It's like a cliff. And so, there's really no living space. Because the house, the new proposed house has actually moved back, further back on the lot, because of this forty-foot setback here, that basically puts the living space outside of the family room on the steep part of the land. And this is where we are proposing the deck, and that's really the main reason we're here. That's sort of in a, in a nutshell. The deck is, by the way, you know, for the neighborhood here, these are all Selleck woods here. This is all town property. So, where the deck is, it's actually right up against the Selleck woods, so it doesn't really impact anybody. In terms of volume, obviously, the deck is right on, at the ground level. And in terms of coverage, we meet the coverage requirements. We meet the height requirements.
What is the coverage asset, do you know?
It's...
The proposed coverage?
Thirteen point eight.
Thirteen point eight.
What do you, imagine a flat piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
If, this is, if he built a patio, he could build a patio outside the buildable area on the ground, right?
Right.
And if it were a flat piece of property, you could put a deck, so long as it's six inches or a foot.
Not more than a foot.
A foot.
Right.
So, it's really, the reason that you're here for that variance, other than the lot size.
Right.
Is because of...
Configuration of the land.
The configuration of the land.
Yeah.
The very steep drop-off that's there.
Right, correct. That's really the main reason. And, you know, we, you know, we put the house where we could, within the setback lines, but we were left with basically no outside, outdoor space, you know, available, because where you step outside, you have a, pretty much like a eight-foot drop.
So, we have a, a lot width issue, but you're all within the buildable area, and the setback is purely related to the deck?
Yes, all deck. All the finished base, right. The house, all the finished bases are the, inside of the house, or within the setback lines.
And Yasek, the new, the proposed structure is more conforming than the existing?
Correct. Yes, because you can see with the, with the yellow outline here of the existing house, you know, that, that existing house comes in as close as nineteen point nine feet in lieu of forty, and twenty-five point two in lieu of forty, and then again, nineteen eight in lieu of twenty-five. So, we, we, we have eliminated that by situating the house right within the building envelope.
And if you hadn't done that, if you kept the house where it was, you could have put a deck. It would have worked better.
Well, yes, actually, we wouldn't even need a deck. We probably could have a patio at that point, right?
Yes.
Which would not require variance. I would still have to come here for variance, probably, to go up.
Right.
But that obviously is...
You'd be putting volume inside. You'd be putting additional volume in an area where you would not be allowed to do it.
Outside of the, yeah.
Right, here, everything's inside the buildable area, except for the deck, which is impacted by that, by that steep drop-off.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I see no problem with it.
I mean, unless we just deny a deck, yeah, right? I mean, that's, there's, the yard is tricky. I went down to look at the space. I mean, it's a, the hardship is the property, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we're all doing?
Yeah, and looking for a flat space for outdoor activity.
For outdoor, exactly.
Which I think is, you know, it's, it's more generic outdoor activity than maybe an application we're going to be hearing later tonight.
Right, true.
Could you, Yasek, did you see this staff notes on the possible area for patio?
To the right side of the property versus...
Off the mudroom? Patio area?
Off, off the, off the mudroom?
Yeah. Did you explore that at all?
Well, yes, but, you know, wouldn't that be a little bit awkward, you know, to go outside to a outdoor space through mudroom, right? I think you want the living space connected to it. And where the kitchen is located, if you look at the plan, the kitchen here and the open space is right here at the front. Oh, I should also add that, you know, we are placing two-car garage within the buildable area. You know, the house currently doesn't have a garage that's, you know, within the setback line. So, that obviously is another, you know, conforming use. And that pushes all the living spaces further back. And so, again, the only place where I can have a deck or living outdoor space is by the living room, right, which is further back. If the garage was, you know, under the house, maybe, but, you know, we thought about it, but it's really hard to get in. Driving in here on the side and trying to make a turn to get under the house, that'd be very difficult.
And the AC units, it looks like on our drawing, they are within...
Garage within setback lines, yes.
Okay.
And that would be in the area where that patio would, would have gone, so...
Right.
Makes it a less functional area. Yeah, I think this is, this is a unique, unique site.
Certainly, yes.
I think that getting the two off-street parking within the building setback is, is a positive movement in reducing the nonconformity. Although the deck, I guess Woody, there's an argument that the deck increases the nonconformity. The deck would be as of right without this, this property's slope, right? And assuming there's no way to...
If it were flat, you could...
Right.
If it was flat, yeah, we, I wouldn't have to...
Be one foot off the ground, right.
And, and the stone patio, you know, if it's more than four feet off the ground, you know, it, it counts as a structure. So, you know, in that case, again, even if I had, you know, we thought about it, you know, stepping it down somehow, but there wouldn't be much of a patio. We'd be just basically steps.
And there's no neighbor issues, because we're talking about Selleck woods on that side, so...
Right, exactly. There's no neighbor here, and there's no neighbor here. There's a neighbor here, and there's a neighbor here. You know, they, you know, my clients, they talk to the neighbors, you know, they, I don't know if there's anybody here to talk.
I'm with them.
Okay, well, you can, you can come up in a second.
Yeah.
So, you know, everybody is really for it.
Okay. I have nothing further. Anyone else on the board have anything further? Woody, do you have anything further?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this application?
Hi, Jan. I was just sent an email from one of the neighbors. I don't know if I did submit it, but it's from Christina...
Tina.
So, she's in support.
So, we just, what we do is, we add this to the record.
I'm sorry, we need your full name for the record.
Jean Sidell Strabels.
Here.
The owner.
The owner.
I'm on the neighbor.
Please step forward to the microphone.
I'm Manohar Pasumarti. I live in thirty-four Fairmead, and I'm supportive of the plan, so...
Could you say it? Could you say your name again, please?
Manohar Pasumarti.
Could you spell it?
Okay. Last name, P.A.S.U.M.A.R.T.I. First name is Manohar. M.A.N.O.H.A.R.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Thanks for coming out this evening. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing no one, anything further from the applicant?
No, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and close this application.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is calendar number, number five, 2019, Stephen Jones. Sorry, Stephen Jones for twenty Raymond Street. And I believe we've seen this application previously.
Yes, I recognize some of the faces. I'm Stephen Jones. I reside at seventy-one Relahan Road, and I'm the lead project guy. So, tonight, we're looking for a reapproval of, an approval that we got back in November sixteen of two thousand and sixteen. And the reason that we need that reapproval is that the existing approval and extensions expired, and we haven't got sufficient construction underway based on zoning's assessment. And also, there are two new neighbors that, that have come into the neighborhood. Hence, hence we're here today to run it by you again.
Can you explain what, what happened in the construction process? You know, we, we spent a lot of time and energy on this application, as you'll, you'll recall, numerous site visits, trying to figure out height of structures and what this thing would look like, and, yeah.
Height of steps and flood levels, and it went on and on for five months.
Yeah, and then, and then to let that lapse, you know, obviously is, is concerning to this board, because, because we spend that time, and we, we give you, your client, their approval, and we assume that they're going to, you know, diligently pursue it. We had a couple of extensions of that timeframe, and then it seems like the, the project lay fallow for, for so long, Woody, that it came back to us for another extension, and we, we felt like it had, too much time had passed and not enough had been done on the project. Is that fair?
No, they didn't ask for an additional extension.
Oh, they did not? Okay.
But the last one, the ZBA provided, you basically said, you know, this is the last one, it really has to go, or we need a new hearing to be fair. So, that's more or less what happened.
Okay.
They had trouble with contractors.
So, can you just give us a little, little idea as to why we're back here?
Yeah, and I, that's a fair question. And, believe me, we've been busy, and we've been trying, and nobody wants to get into their house sooner than my client. There really are four things that happened. One is the approval process itself. The first ZBA approval had expired before we even got our last regulatory approval. So, by the time, you know, we got through just the basic regulatory process, we'd already expired on the first ZBA approval.
Does that mean like EPC and...
And zoning commission, yes. And in fact, the last zoning commission approval was May of last year. And that was for, and we had to relocate and re-engineer the retaining wall for the road and, and for the foundation. And with that, you know, there was a certain amount of time there, but it also involved all kinds of other new surveys, new engineering. Landscape plan had to be approved. We had to go through the DPW, which we didn't get through until the end of August. That took five weeks with a civil engineer to get the guide rail... Um, that took five weeks with a civil engineer to get the guide rail solution, both temporary and permanent resolved. Um, there, there were numerous other requirements with the police, with parking, with bonds, with insurance, uh, with survey, uh, elevations, uh, just, the list went on and on. So by the, the end of, uh, August, beginning of September, we were ready to apply for the permit, which we got from zoning, um, the middle of October of two thousand and eighteen. So that was our first chance to start working on the lot. And we started working on the lot, and the, um, the next thing that happened was the contractor came in with a new bid at thirty-six percent over the original bid, which was over half a million dollar increase. And we tried to negotiate that down, and they weren't interested. Um, so we had to put together a new construction team, which we did at the end of, uh, October, and we got our building permit, and, uh, but what happened there, we got dragged out on opening the lot, the street opening. Took us, uh, three weeks to get through the DPW to get permission and get railing in place for, uh, access to the property. And then, because the original contractor abandoned it, we had to come in with a new contractor, finish clearing the lot, regrade it, put all new, um, soil and erosion controls in, new access, fix the guide rail, all that stuff, and it took us to the end of, of November. At which time, we did offer an extension letter to, uh, Jeremy, and we have a record of, of that. But he recommended that, rather than test your patience, just get the job done. So that was what we tried to do, but the weather didn't cooperate. We had the wettest fall and early winter on record in Connecticut. And it's a very complicated process, where we need three weeks of clear, um, weather to excavate and pin to the ledge rock. We can't have freeze thaw, pouring rain, um, the really high, uh, levels of the, of the river have never been so high, consistently so high. So we were snookered in terms of moving forward, and then with January and, uh, February, the freeze thaw was preventing us from moving forward as well. So we were ready to move forward about a month ago. Uh, but at that time, uh, we got a notice saying that, um, the permit had been retracted, both zoning and building departments, and we were going to have to reapply for the ZBA.
All right, so, so that's, that's super helpful.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, it was, you know, it was re-engineering, it was protracted process, it was, um, the weather issues. And they all just-
Yeah, I, I hadn't thought of the fact that the, the, the unique nature of the site requires a very specific timeframe within which you can, you can work on it, so.
Yeah, some of these things we didn't know as we went into the process. It was the, uh, you know, engineers and, and contractors that told us that we, we can't work in this weather. And we were just like, but we have a deadline.
Are, are we prepared at this point, though?
Yes.
If, if, if we move forward with this application?
We have the service mask, yes. Everything is ready to go. We're, and we have, uh, survey people waiting on putting the stakes in. Um, as soon as that, you know, we get the green light, they're going to put the stakes in for the foundation. Um, you know, all the contractors are, are anxious to go.
And just so the record is clear, nothing's happened in the interim. There's been no buying or selling or change of the, the lot lines.
Yeah.
So the lot is exactly the same.
Yeah, the design lot.
I wasn't on the hearing, uh, when it was approved, I don't think. The building plans are exactly the same.
Yes, the only change went through the, um, zoning commission, and that was moving the foundation wall forward. And that, you know, required the HECRA's engineering model and slope analysis.
Does that change the setbacks that you're asking for in this application? So this application and the variances down to the measurements are exactly the same as what this board approved.
Right. Even, we weren't sure, but they just did the survey calculations, and, and even the height is the same.
Okay. Woody, can we bring in the findings of the, our application on the hardship of the site and the-
I think we have to reestablish it, 'cause it's a new application.
Well, you could certainly incorporate the previous file now. That file actually has a peer consultant review and lots of-
It's a pretty-
Lots of, lots of information.
It's a really good thing to do, because it's got a lot of evidence in there. So if anyone challenges the findings on this, it's good to have the other one part of the record.
That's fine, that's fine. But I think we still need to separately establish.
Is that, that's a model of the house?
Yes.
Um, I could put that on the-
Yeah, so sorry, we, we sort of hijacked your app, your, your application a little bit there. We were just trying to get a sense of what, what, you know, what the history is here, so please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, the other, the other part of this is there were a bunch of conditions of the prior approval.
Right.
Stipulations, which might want to confirm that they're willing to abide by without difficulty. They included some significant landscape tree planting.
Okay.
But we spent a part of last summer of Woody getting that, uh, put together and, and put to bed.
So the answer is yes, you would?
Yeah. Now, we have, uh, official landscape plan that's tentatively approved by zoning.
And does that address erosion control?
Uh, that's a separate plan, actually, that, um, the, it's part of maybe the rain garden, but it doesn't really address, um, erosion controls. I mean, there's erosion controls during the, uh, construction process, which are in place now. Um, and then there's, uh, a rain garden for filtering under normal conditions. But under storm conditions, that's potentially all underwater. So that, that, uh, rain garden filters water from the driveway runoff and the roof runoff.
So I wasn't on the first application. I assume all of that is part of that, or they would have to resubmit?
So generally, uh, things like that are planning and zoning issues.
Okay.
Um, or EPC issues. We're, we're really, we're really the meets and downs of the property, um, and the setbacks, and, um, in this case, the height of the structure.
Okay.
Um, he, but they are required, um, by planning and zoning to maintain their runoff as part of their, their application planning.
Yeah, we had to file with the land, um, board here. We had to file a, uh, maintenance plan for gutters and things like that, so, and file a special permit. So that, that has all been done, paid for. But we did, a lot of things that might have been covered by the ZBA, because there were so many different boards involved, we did sort of cut it up and, and, you know, divide it between the different boards. And EPC really got into details on, on drainage, environment, coastal, um, impact, flood impact, all, all that. And then, again, um, the zoning commission did, covered a lot of that, too.
So can you just briefly go through sort of your hardship and, and nature of the project? And, um, just sort of give us the, the bright line? We are going to include the previous record for, for purposes of, of including any information that was contained in there, including peer review documents, uh, but if you could just give us sort of a, um, a review of that?
All right, um, well, the variances we're looking for, it's, it's, uh, under section three eighty-five. We have a mainland area that's six thousand seven seven eight square feet versus eight thousand seven hundred and twelve, um, for a fifth acre zoning. The lot itself is over a third of an acre, but, um, part of what this board determined was that we were going to treat the mainland as, really as the property and not take the island into account. Um, so the, the mainland area is legally nonconforming lot area. And, uh, it's only sixty-five feet deep versus a hundred feet deep. And a hundred feet is the lot depth that's normally required. Uh, the front yard setback is fourteen point four feet versus twenty-five feet. And, uh, because we have a substandard width road, we have twenty-nine feet versus fifty feet from the center line of the road for the front setback. In the rear, we have twelve feet versus twenty-five feet. And that rear takes you right to the water line. Um, and then for building height, we have thirty-nine point four feet versus thirty-foot max. And then, uh, and those were all under section four oh six. And under section nine oh six point three, uh, we have a portion of the off-street parking that's in the front yard setback. Mainly because the, mainly because the buildable area of this home is, and here's the front yard setback, is right in here. And one of the requirements, um, when you're building in an AE flood zone like this with FEMA and deep, is that you push the structure as, as far away from the floodway as you can. So we basically decided that we located as close to the road that you could safely park and back out. And that became the determining factor as to how far back the house had to be.
Where was the original house located on this?
There's no.
There was never a house built here.
Yeah.
It's been one of the more daunting project, properties in-
No one's been brave enough.
Yeah, and they had paid their taxes up, and it was subdivided this way in sixty-four. And all the lots on either side were built up, developed, but not this one.
Can you show me where the thirty-nine, um, uh, thirty-nine point three three feet is on the roof line? Just so I can get a sense, and maybe, I, I think we're looking from the river towards the house. Maybe if we could get it turned around and, and see a street view, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of-
So here's a street view of, of the house. And the mean roof height, which is what they use for the roof height, is right here.
Yeah.
Um, what we did do is we looked at the neighbors' houses, and we had to calculate the roof heights of those,
Yeah.
based on the perception from the street. Um, so this is conforming with most, it's not taller than the neighbors' houses. So, and that was one of the-
Is that your only justification for that variance? Is it a?
No, there were, there, we were getting pushed up by the, the, um, hundred-year flood level of twelve point four, needing to clear it. The base of this house has a five-and-a-half-foot-deep substructure, and we need a clearance of, for debris, is what they want in the AE river zone. We have flat, uh, fast-flowing water, if a tree or even a small house or something comes down the river. Um, we not only have to take the impact, but they want it to try and clear underneath the house, 'cause we're cantilevered over the floodway.
As I recall from your previous application, you actually had requested a higher structure. We brought you down dramatically through some engineering, and, um, I can't remember if it was just the engineering or if there, if we reduced the total height.
It was a combination of, of being similar to the other houses on the street, so it was sort of matching the neighbors. It was a combination of, of how steep we were going to make the driveway. We needed one step up in the garage to get into the house, um, so-
If this were on a flat piece of property, if you didn't have the calculation of the land dropping off behind?
It would be well under the thirty-foot max, yes.
It would be, okay. So that, so it's really a factor, it's a function, that's the right word, of the land dropping off?
Yes, the geography of the land with that sixteen-foot drop. I, I heard Yasek say they have a eight-foot drop, but we have sixteen-foot drop.
Oh, you had a two.
We, we, we actually, um, when this was proposed the last time, we actually had them put flags at the peak height of the roof to, to sort of demonstrate what that would look like in relation to the neighbors, and that was very, very helpful.
Oh, what?
Okay, uh, I think if we're incorporating a record from, uh, your previous application, I'm, I'm satisfied unless you, you need to get a-
Yeah, so I wasn't on that, so, so thank you for answering the, the questions that you probably answered previously.
A bunch of times.
Yeah. We're, we're getting good at it.
Yeah. Uh, anything, any other questions from the board?
I think the only question is the neighbors' letters that we have, looking to-
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we're going to hear probably from some neighbors, so let's, let's, um, let's wait until the end. We'll, we'll go through, through the neighbors. Woody, anything from you?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. If it's okay with you, maybe we'll open it up to, to neighbor comment and, and, uh-
No, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Should I stay up here in case they?
Yeah, in case there's questions that, that need to be answered. Are, are there any neighbors who wish to be heard on this application?
Things is really strange. I actually live across the street.
Okay.
You're double duty here tonight.
I actually have the person who lives directly across.
I'm sorry, you, you have to come up if you want to comment.
I, I don't live directly across. She really does. I'm, uh, actually through Raymond Street.
Your name for the record again, I'm sorry.
Jean Sidell Stubble.
And your name for the record?
I'm, uh, Meredith Ray Gallagher. I'm at, um, eighteen Raymond Heights. So I'm the property that did the modular home a few years back.
Yes.
And I'm virtually above which property is put on the Raymond Street, Raymond Heights board.
So do you have comments about this proposal, this application?
I personally just think that, uh, I, I have nothing bad to say. I'm in support of the fact that they developed this. I think any concern is that it's on a curb, and so the only thing is to do with parking and congestion, 'cause it's a small street, and so having watched, um, the one, I don't remember the address, just look there, yeah.
Twenty-four and twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Oh, yeah. Watching now, so I lived on two of the trees and I used to run by it, sorry. I lived on two of the trees and I used to run by it all the time. And so I saw the congestion on the street, and I didn't even live there. So I'm just saying, so long as it's thoughtful for how to park vehicles on that part is my only concern. I'm in support of that.
So Stephen, can you, can you address that a little bit? We, we, we've done, I think, I don't know if you've done a few projects. I think you've done a few projects in this neighborhood, um, or we've seen a few applications between Raymond Heights and, and this area. And, and obviously, in these confined neighborhoods, um, and, and maybe this was addressed by planning and zoning, we, we generally don't get into the mechanics of this. Is there a proposal? Is there a plan? Is, is, I mean, are, you know, off-site parking for construction vehicles, you know, bringing, bringing, bringing?
That was one of the stipulations, and, and, you know, we really do, did have to go above and beyond. Um, the homeowner, uh, client has, has leased, uh, extra parking spaces for the contractors from local businesses. Um, and that had to go in front of the, um, Darien Police Department traffic, uh, and get approved by them. And then it went to the DPW to get approved by them before they would issue a, a street open for, permit for us.
Okay, and, and those have been secured and will continue to be secured for this project? You have stockpiling areas, staging areas for materials and things like that?
Yes, so it's, it's tight, um, and we have to keep it out of the floodway. So we have to, it's a complicated process, but we've had to go through all of that with, uh, the, uh, zoning commission and with the DPW as well.
Okay.
So we're addressing it, and, um, the irony is that, that lot has been used as the contractor parking lot for years for all of the new models and new houses on the street, because it wasn't occupied.
No, that's not true. No, that's definitely not true.
If you want to, sorry.
I don't mean to oppose you, but that's-
Ma'am, 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 if you want to speak, you have to come to the microphone.
All right, so I'm Meredith Ray Gallagher. So that's the narrowest part of the road. You actually can't park there.
Okay, I'm saying that.
So if there's a car there, so everyone's done like a type, would they really park with that?
Meredith, you could step up to the-
So, okay, so historically, though, the house next to me, fourteen Raymond Street.
Ms. Gallagher? Hold on. I have to address the microphone on the board.
And also talk to the board.
Yeah.
Fourteen, so I've lived on the prep in the neighborhood the longest. So fourteen Raymond Street used to have an open access point between heights and street. Uh, and that went under construction at the same time as me, and that access point got closed and made into a driveway on the Raymond Heights side. But historically, when projects were happening, people parked there and in that driveway. But where this house is going is a, is a very narrow turning point in the road. You actually cannot put a car in this part of the road and safely get around without getting somebody.
So let me ask you a question. Do you have comments on the proposed project?
I actually am fine with it. I've watched it from afar, and it's the first time I've come to one of the meetings. I think my only concern is the financial aspect of it. The first time a price popped, it became a problem, and I think anyone who has built knows the price is going to pop as you are building, so I think that's my only step back. Is this project going to get completed? Um, and that would be my only concern. The reality is it's a beautiful house, and I think it's an interesting prospect and, and project. It'll be fun to watch from my yard, um, but it's, the, the road is a scary, scary point. I think there's going to be a car accident. I, it's just a very tight turn.
You think it's going to be a car accident because someone's exiting that property? Or you think just because of during construction, or?
I think logistically, between buses trying to get through, that is a bus route for kindergartners, between, you know, just back and forth traffic, it, the reality is that little niche of land that Raymond Heights curve probably should be a one-way road. I mean, because between that curve and the next curve, you're constantly, you're constantly dodging each other.
Okay, okay.
Um, this is something we had to cover with the police department, because they, they did get neighbors concerned. Um, I do have photographs of that street just packed with construction vehicles that were for twenty, twenty-four and twenty-six in the last two years, and a school bus going by as well.
Okay.
Um, and one was an eight-foot-wide trailer that was in, parked on the side, and the school bus driver went by. So my only contrapoint was that, you know, if, if there's an occasional truck there or something, it shouldn't be like, you know, five-alarm issue. There, there could be times when someone needs to stop and drop something off or-
to stop and drop something off or check on something.
Right, and so far, it's gone well. So far, they've had dump trucks and they've pulled all the trees out, it's gone fine. That hasn't been an issue, we've watched it and it's fine, but it's just a tricky part of the road, period. I think for, for the new owner pulling out, I think for anybody, it's a tricky part of the road.
And you, you've gone over sightlines with DPW and all that sort of stuff, so there's sufficient sightlines to.
Yeah, even the landscaping plan had to be built around that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Oh, sorry, there is, in the file, there is a neighbor letter, seventeen Raymond Street. Did you see this letter? It's a handwritten note. Do you want to pass that around? I mean, it's hard to get a note in a file without having someone attend. Woody, did they, did they, did you encourage them to attend? Did they?
Well, the person called and said they weren't able to be here, but they wanted to write something, and that was the option.
Did they ask for any additional time or?
I believe, I'm not sure.
So, this is a.
They definitely did not ask for additional time.
They did not, okay. This is, this is a note from Jeanne Brown, and basically, it says that, it basically says that there should, really should be no house built on this lot, and, you know, I don't think that that's within the purview of our board. You know, you've proposed sensible, sensible development. The only thing, you know, you know, the height variance, you know, is concerning, but I think this is such a unique lot with the topography and the slope and the floodplain and, and the trussing requirements that you have, that all were explained previously to justify the need for that additional height. You know, I think, I think you've made a compelling case there. So, if there's no one further that wants to be heard in the audience, we'll go ahead.
Last question.
Sure, go ahead.
One of the concern they have here is the size of the house, and I think someone asked the question, is the, is the proposed size, is the same as, as it was granted before?
Yes, and in fact, during the process, it was a bigger house, and through negotiations and working through the board, it actually got whittled down and one bedroom got taken off, until we got it down to that fairly small footprint.
What is the footprint?
You know, in terms of the coverage or?
Yeah, coverage-wise.
I'm not sure, it's, I don't have the zoning data right in front of me, but it's well under the twenty percent.
It was a four-bedroom, four-bath, and now it's a three-bedroom, three-bath proposal.
Seventeen percent.
Yeah.
So, it's better than what we had granted before?
Yes.
From a size point of view?
No different.
This is what they granted.
It had improved under pressure, we, we.
During the application process.
Made it as small as we felt we could.
It's improved from the original application, and it's, it's the same as what we approved previously. The island issue, I guess is another thing worth noting, we did not, we did not allow you to count that towards coverage.
Well, but I think we allowed it in coverage, but not in setbacks.
Not in setbacks.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, so that we, that's why we don't have a coverage variance, because we have a fairly large block.
Yeah. Okay. Their property. Okay, thank you very much, we'll go ahead and close that application. We are on to calendar number six, 2019, the application of Wilder Gleason. We'll give him a minute to clear the room.
This is for One Tokneek Beach Drive.
I'm sorry, but they.
Yep. I can close the door.
Can we, yeah.
Might close the door just like?
Thank you.
Kind of stopper gizmo.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Can I give you enough tuning?
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Wilder Gleason, Gleason and Associates, I'm here with Joan and Catherine Mancini, who are contract purchasers of the Castleau property, which we worked with you earlier this year in January, calendar one, 2019, and that house is in construction. The foundation's been poured, and we're about to get building permits to frame the house. And the Castleaus decided that they were not interested in living here going forward, and they found an old classmate who lives in town, and John and Catherine and their family of four boys, I think it is, yeah, would like to move from their current place in Darien to this house, but they want to modify the house to meet the needs of their larger family. And so, they would like to build a fifth bedroom within the approved building envelope. The plans you approved earlier this year in calendar one, 2019, included a two-story living room. They would make that a one-story living room and add the fifth bedroom and bathroom. And the plans you approved earlier for the Castleaus had a one-story, three-car garage with four rambunctious boys. They would like to have a bonus room, essentially a place for the guys to go play, which would be a second story over the existing approved garages. And as a result of this increased inhabitable space, they need one additional HVAC unit.
Well, Wilder, you present an interesting problem. I wasn't here, right, Woody, on the prior application, which we agreed was the minimal adjustment necessary to, the board must have come to the conclusion, there's a minimal adjustment necessary to address the hardship. Now, you're going above what we granted as the minimal adjustment necessary.
We're not changing any of the setbacks. What we're doing is adding a building envelope.
You're adding volume.
Volume, yeah.
Which is going, which is increasing the nonconformity. You and I can have that argument all night, we'll probably have for fourteen years. But we win on that, you're increasing the nonconformity by increasing the volume.
So, if we had come, no, the prior house that was there before the Castleaus got their approval, had a two-story structure above the garage, and it had an illegal apartment, and that had been approved previously, not the apartment, but the habitable space, so we're essentially creating a second story where one existed previously.
But, but the problem is, the board just three months ago approved something, and it made a determination about the minimal adjustment, I mean, it has to, right? That was it. Now, you're asking for more than that. In my mind, it's a problem.
And, and, and so, the hardship remains the same that we had before.
Right.
We have all these other, and what you're then saying is essentially, you would be saying we would be fixed with this house as a four-bedroom house forever, unless we can see a change.
Right, unless, unless, so then you're a new applicant, you're coming here and you say something's changed. The zoning rules have changed between the time it was built as a four-bedroom and not a five-bedroom. What's changed between, what's changed between January and today, other than the ownership and their personal desires to do something different with this house than the prior applicants?
What has changed is that.
Let me ask you a question. Did you have an approved five-bedroom septic in the previous application?
We, the septic that we have is approved for five bedrooms, so the septic would accommodate a five-bedroom house.
But is that the same design that you had previously?
There's no change in the septic fields. The only change to accommodate a five-bedroom septic is that we have to install a bigger septic tank, which is underground, and we have to install a bigger retention tank for the effluent to be pumped into the septic fields. We're not changing septic fields at all, and that approval is part of the record, I believe.
Let me ask you a question. If this building had already been built, according to the variance that we provided in January of 2019, and you have a new client, a contract purchaser, what would you argue to us to justify increasing the nonconformity? If it was built?
That you would have granted that same variance had it been proposed initially.
But, but you can't do that, because what we granted was the minimal adjustment necessary. Now, you're asking for more. So, that's what makes that argument, I think, fall flat. Because we're only allowed to give you the minimal adjustment necessary. Statutorily, that's all we're empowered to do, and that's all we did at the prior application.
Then what happens on the logic that you have is that someone, if you have a house like this, which was, you can never increase it.
Well, you know, nothing against our real estate broker colleagues, we know a lot of brokers used to say to a, a customer, I know it's only three or four bedrooms, but you can get a variance and get something more. What's the basis for that?
The basis?
Sometimes houses are stuck with the way they are. Because of their, because there's no hardship to justify and increase nonconforming use. And that's what you're asking us to do. You're asking us to essentially increase the nonconforming use that was approved just four months ago, and the only thing that's changed is the owner of the house. Not yet, sorry, contract owner of the house.
Not yet, yeah. I believe there is, that the nature of, I believe that you have lots of hardships in that it is almost confiscatory the way it's granted now. So, here's what happens.
Really? So, what you're saying is, what you're saying is the grant that was made, I don't know if you represented the prior owners.
I did represent the prior application.
You did?
Yeah.
So, you walked out of the house, you walked out of the office here saying, oh my God, they granted it, but they basically confiscated some value?
No, let me just, let me just finish if I can, okay? There is a provision that if the application of the zoning regulations to the property operates, not so that, there's, you have statutory hardship, which means you're basically denied any reasonable use of your property. It's almost like a taking without compensation.
Right.
That's the standard that the Supreme Court has set, as what you need to find in order to justify a variance, okay? So, then there is another case called Culinary Institute that says that if the application of the zoning regulations is so confiscatory that it can, it denies, it, it, well, so, the application here, so let me just go, go with it, okay, if I can.
Wilder, hang on a second, let me just, let me just make a comment here. Gary, I think, I think the argument would be this, that, and, and, and I'm not trying to shoehorn into an argument, but, but under your logic, we couldn't approve any second-story addition on any site that we had previously granted a variance, right?
We're very reluctant to do that. We, we don't necessarily always allow people to go straight up.
We don't, we don't necessarily always allow, right?
They have to demonstrate.
But if someone comes in with an application and we determine that it's the minimum adjustment, that doesn't mean that that's the only adjustment that can ever be made to that property, right? You would argue that it is.
You know, in, in certain cases, you have to demonstrate, I think, changes that have occurred to justify something more. This is four months ago. Obviously, I have a problem with it. It was four months ago the application came in. Otherwise, there's no end to what you can do.
But in the reverse logic, then every application that comes in has to ask for the maximum use of the property that they could possibly.
I think most people do, but, but there's a lot of case law that says that personal preference of the owner does not justify the variance.
They're also seeking a variance for a pool, so it's a little bit more than increasing the mass.
No, it's increasing the nonconforming use of the property in several different ways.
Right.
There's two components. The building a fifth bedroom falls within the envelope that was previously approved.
Including the volume or not volume?
We're, we're not treating any increased volume.
And that's the orange hash?
That's the hash.
Right, so I would argue, if that's true, that doesn't increase the, you're not increasing the roof, it is the volume that was approved in two thousand, earlier this year, then I would, I would say, even though it's a slightly increased use, but it's a fifth bedroom, I might say that's okay under the prior application.
But the bonus room.
The bonus room and the pool, the bonus room and the pool are, in my mind, increasing the nonconforming use.
Well, I would say that the bonus room is a logical outcome of having a fifth bedroom, and that it's, and I understand you're talking about case law that says that you need a hardship to justify the change.
Right.
It's the same hardship that we had before, that this would have been approved previously. And the fact that, and there are, as Mike has pointed out, numerous applications where you add expansion over existing footprints, so long as you're not decreasing the setbacks.
I think, I think the newer case law on this issue argues against this.
All right, so.
That use, that, the pink use, which I think is your bonus room.
Okay, so, yeah, that is the bonus.
So, can we just see what the bonus room is?
The bonus room is here.
But I mean, give us, give us, give us the presentation on the bonus room. How, how high are we going? What is it?
So, the easiest thing is for me to look at these architectural things that you have, which I'll take you through. This is the foundation, no change. This is the first floor, the addition is one HVAC compressor, which is further away from the club property line than the existing HVAC. We're a half-foot further, we're, this is twenty-six point five, this is twenty-seven feet from the property line. We need to be forty under the regulations. We're adding one HVAC compressor. This is the former living room that was two-story housing space, and now we can have, this is within the building envelope that was previously.
You can't know about the building envelope, but it's building envelope and volume.
Right, but that's.
And, and, I say, yeah, and volume, okay, so that's all. This is the new bonus room, which is over the former one-story garage, no.
Where does the setback line run through that pink? Right down the middle of it?
If you look at the survey.
Right in the center.
Right down the center of it?
Yeah.
It's right down the center.
Okay.
So, we're as of right as to a portion of it, but because of the configuration that existed previously with the driveway turnaround here and the septic fields here, we really can't pull the garage closer. But about half of the bonus room is as of right. So, we're talking about a portion of it, and I don't know the area of it, but it's, this portion is the area which.
For argument's sake, we'll call it that.
Yeah, volume. We meet the setback entirely in terms of the previously approved setback, there's no change otherwise. So, it's essentially, this portion's closer to the club. Now, the club had looked for years at a two-story structure very much like this. Let me just keep going if I can, to finish up the architect thing. This is the new, and by the way, I'm not taking any credit for gable roof lines that are in here, that were previously approved. This is down to essentially the eaves of the former one-story garage. So, even if you're, the, you know, to get this, we've lifted the roof line a bit. That roof line extended about here.
How much have you lifted the roof line?
I don't know exactly, the architect is not here, but I assume the roof line's been lifted five feet.
Do you have, do you have a copy of the previously approved plan?
I don't, yeah, I probably have it in my, I don't know if I have it in my file.
So, that's the same design as before, but lifted, he's saying? So, that's all I remember, I don't remember.
I'll take a look at it. We're going to see it right now. Woody, did you have some comments while we're waiting?
That just might, might have been a hit, please, I'm not sure. The only thing I was going to offer while we were struggling a bit was that there is a buildable area in which the pool and other additional volumes could be located without a variance, so they're here because they're outside.
And this house has never, actually, what's happened is the regulations increased over time. time. It was built in 1925 or so. It was built in essentially this location.
You took it down.
Pardon? And then we tore it down when we got a variance to provide a, to renovate that house. And then we thought we were renovating it and we were told it really needed to be replaced, so we came in with revised application, essentially moving the house seven feet further north. And we're now in a situation where this, um, the volume that we're talking about is lifting up here and it's half of that. I don't have a plan for the prior.
Wilder, has the septic system been installed?
It's an existing system.
They had to do all these deep test holes for an existing system?
The deep test holes were done, um, I've done it. All I know is Doug DeVesta looked at it. He said that there's adequate septic leaching field now, and David Knopf has signed off on a five-bedroom system for this, provided we add a new, a larger tank and a holding tank as well, septic tank. Because we aren't sized for a five-bedroom.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
And I think this is constructive. I honestly think we should, we should continue this. Couple of things that would be helpful. If we could see the existing approved overlaid on what you're proposing, so we can get our heads around what, what the additional ask is.
Yep.
I'd like a, I hate to rely on town council because it slows everything down. I'd like, I'd like some basis of an argument as to why we can approve this.
Yep.
Because it's, as Gary points out, if we, three months ago have approved the minimum adjustment necessary, how can we turn around and say, "This is the minimum adjustment necessary"? So what's, what's the basis for that? And I don't know the answer to that, that's why I'm asking it. And then confirmation that this is the only site where this septic can go, that we can't, we can't move this at all, and we're stuck with the septic location. And I think with those three things, we'd be in a much better position to, to make a decision on this, right?
Sure.
I, I just don't see, Gary, to your point, I don't see how you.
Yeah, I mean, that elevation is helpful to me because it's not, you're not proposing to go to the main house elevation.
No.
So that's helpful.
And, and, yeah.
And I, and I think your suggestion's right because the pool, the pool is troubling, just to lay it all out there, because I'm pretty transparent, the pool is troubling because that's the same thing. It is a additional, as Barb pointed out, it's a, it's an additional nonconforming use of, of the property that wasn't presented, wasn't decided when we decided what the minimum, the board decided what the minimum adjustment necessary.
And I think if you look at it from the perspective of, would we have approved it if you had brought it to us the first time? I think the answer's probably no.
I don't know about that, given the, the history of variances that I've researched.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I didn't, I, there's so much buildable area here. Again, I wasn't, I, I don't know why we approved this at all. But the foundation's in now, and the grant, and the grant was made, so.
Well, I mean, you start with.
I don't wanna go through this because it is there.
I have to tell you, it started with that, that area in the north is essentially unusable but for the septic at this point. And you had a prior house, and we also have all the neighbors signed off on this. They think it's a, it's an appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think zoning decisions live beyond current neighbors, as you know.
I absolutely understand that.
Now, but I wanna, is this, when you drive in here, I'm trying to remember this, parking lot for Tokonik Club is like over here, right? So this.
Parking lot for Tokonik is here, and this is Ned Goodenhouse property, and he also owns on this side.
So this house overlooks the parking lot?
This overlooks the parking lot.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to make sure. There's no house moving impacted.
And this is the one that overlooks the parking lot that we're talking about.
Okay.
And we have taken all the equipment that is proposed, the pool equipment and otherwise, and located it on the club side so that it's not impacting neighbors.
And the club has no problem with this?
And the club has a letter of support, which we're happy to submit. In fact, we might as well.
But if I'm remembering this right, a big reason we didn't relocate the house is because of that existing septic system.
Yes.
So now if we're talking about redoing that or making changes to that.
The castles are just gonna keep building the house that they're doing, I suspect. I mean, what, what they really would like to do.
The question was to, to confirm that it's, that it's in, in.
Right.
Yeah.
It was going to work, we weren't gonna touch it. That was a big reason why we approved these variances.
And then we're just confirming.
Okay, we're confirming that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Well, the original approval for the renovation of the old house was we were going to maintain the first floor deck, and then the deck got destroyed.
But once you, once you take, I mean, as, I'll play the role of Vic here, once you take down the walls and you take down the house, then kind of that whole concept of that's where the house was disappears.
Well, the hardship to justify the variance that we're operating under now was that we really couldn't go north because of the septic.
That's, I understand.
And I think also.
And the driveway access, because it's very steep. It goes from elevation five to elevation 23.
It's been a steep night.
It's very steep.
A lot of, a lot of topography.
And the access really has to come off here.
I get it.
Which then forces the house.
I actually don't wanna relitigate the, yeah, but, but what I'm saying, in fact, the opposite, I'm saying we have that variance. What someone needs to justify to me is what happened between four months ago and today other than, other than change of owner and their personal desires to justify increased nonconforming use on this property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that's what we've asked for in, in, in just verification of the, the septic, and that's the, that's really the only spot it can be on the property. And.
Greater detail about the volume increase.
Greater detail, that'd be very helpful.
That approaches in the setback.
Correct, 100%.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing that, I think, Wilder, you mentioned you had research on other applications, pool issue variances or something. You might wanna submit whatever you have and let the board have that prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
When are we doing that one then?
May 15.
May 15. I won't be here May 15, so good luck to everyone. That's a joke, I'll be here May 15.
You may not want me to be here May 15.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, that's my suggestion. If you wanna close it tonight, happy to have it closed.
I have no interest in closing, given the colloquy we've had.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your suggestion.
Yeah, I think, I think that's good, and let's, so we'll go ahead and continue that until May 15. Sure. In the meantime, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard in this application? Anyone? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Does that get us to the end of the agenda? That was six, seventh, we did first, so we are at the end of the agenda. We can go ahead and start. Woody, I didn't ask you if you had any comments on that last application, but you can reserve till, they're coming back, so.
I think we can leave that door open now if you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with application for 2019.
I think the only option is not to grant a deck at all, and then they're limited on outdoor space. But in looking at it, I don't see any other optimal location to put outdoor space, and I've seen that property. There's nothing, there's no way to build a stone terrace or anything else.
Yeah, I mean, my only struggle is, is, is that really?
A hardship.
A hardship or a minimum adjustment?
I, I don't think it is, actually.
A hardship?
A hardship is, the.
The hardship is the lots, the land.
The land is the hardship.
Topography, is that typically a hardship?
I mean, hardship has to go with the land, so here we're saying the land is the hardship.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think the hardship exists. The question is whether this is the minimum adjustment necessary. Like, do they, do they, are they deprived of their substantial use and justice of their property or whatever the, whatever the, Kevin had that one down perfectly, but it's substantial use of their property by not being able to have a deck?
Well, they need to get out, I mean, to get out from that, and, because there's stairs down.
Well, right, if they're asking for a stairway, though, that would be a lot different than a deck.
So I think, so I think in this case, by the way, you've got a, a burdened lot, smaller, right, it's, it's undersized. They have, they're building a house that's not a overly large house, but it is entirely, despite the small size, smaller size of the lot, it's entirely within the buildable area. So they, which is great, right? That's what they.
They did what they're supposed to do.
Right. So their one ask in order to live in this house is to have a reasonable-sized deck that is in the location of the house where the land drops off precipitously. And if that land were flat, they would build a one-foot deck or a patio, but it's really, it's actually tied to that location of the land.
Yes.
And that land is, is the hardship.
And there's no map to it. It's a flat deck.
Right.
And I agree, I thought they were very conservative in their design. I liked that they incorporated a two-car garage for off-street parking.
What I would say is that shall not be converted into a screen porch with a roof and screening, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, that's the. Stipulation going forward, okay.
Right, that I wouldn't permit to be done on this.
Right, right.
Because then that's a bigger structure.
And they could probably have an awning for sun protection or umbrellas or something, maybe?
No, no addition.
No, anything, okay.
Nothing built, no built coverage, yeah.
I think this is a.
A simple deck, a simple. What about railings and that kind of thing?
Well, it's railing to code.
No railings.
You'd have to, because for safety reasons.
Railing, railing to code.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's well. In the, in the, in the rock outcrop, I think impacts it as well.
Yeah.
I think there's a natural rock formation there that makes it, frustrates the ability to, to build there. Woody, you, you sounded like you had some input.
I was just admiring Mr. Green's veteranship. We've had stipulations we've used for a lot of years.
Yeah.
Recently, but with decks and things that are in the setback, that they're not being enlarged horizontally or vertically, they're not have any structures over top of them like trellises or anything else.
Yeah.
Furniture, patio thing, maybe an umbrella, sure.
Yeah.
But just no structural additions to it.
We could require a smaller deck, correct? I mean, that would be one thing we could do, is say this deck is too large. I think this fits with. I, I think it's fine, I'm just asking the question.
Woody, what about the space below the deck? Do we do anything there? Is that not to be enclosed, not to be used for, can they use it for storage?
No, because that is then, that's a good point, that should be added, because then that's basically building a storage shed in the.
Right, in the setback area.
And that's.
So, so no storage, no nothing under there?
No enclosure, not enclosed.
They're not allowed to put some lattice up to make it look better.
I don't know.
That is, that is one of the things we've had in the step, not to have lattice, plastic or anything else that encloses, like a front porch in the setback, we've used that many times. Have a simple railing.
I think, I think the idea is, I think the idea is it's supposed to replicate the patio.
Right, we're trying to make it as patio-esque as possible.
Right.
So, so Woody, what we were talking about, though, is the space underneath the deck and not, not enclosing that at all. You know, they can do decorative columns or something like that, but.
They could put plantings.
Right, that's fine, because that's, right.
Okay, I, I get comfortable with it.
Yeah, so I'll make a, I think we found the hardship. I think we, as far as the size of the lot, it was a previously nonconforming housing lot.
The terrain.
They're reducing the nonconformities by bringing everything into the buildable area. They're not asking for any variances, bulk variances outside of the deck. I think the deck is the minimum adjustment necessary, given the topography, the rock outcroppings. With the stipulations that we discussed, I move to approve the application.
I'll second.
Hall of favor? unanimous? Okay, the next, wait a minute, it was Raymond Street. This is, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a really, really, really tough lot, and we spent a lot, a lot, a lot. For those of you that weren't, weren't sitting on this in the first application, we spent a.
Was it always a individual lot that was just never built on?
Never built on.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so.
And it was zoned, it was subdivided and zoned as a building lot?
Yeah. It was before, I, I, I think it was all done before FEMA cared.
Yeah.
So the island is part of the lot, but you can't use it, so you can.
The lot is huge, the river is part of the lot.
Right.
Like, it's, it's a.
Are you allowed to build a bridge to the island?
There's some real odd things up there.
What's up here is interesting, is the mean-high water line, actually, along this river. It's titled up to 22. And by law, that is property, you can own below the mean-high water line.
Right.
So that is part of the complication, where one of their variances is a rear setback from the mean-high water river edge, rather than across the island to the far side or the north side.
Talk about a hardship, yeah.
Definitely a glitch with that.
So the, the lot, absolutely, with the lot taking into account the topography, the river, and the island, it's certainly unique.
And, and the topography, the slope.
Right, and, and, you know.
Yeah.
And a number of hardship elements, I think, are met here.
And when Steve took us through what the approvals were to get to this point, now I have a better perspective on why this didn't go forward. I had no idea.
Much better perspective, and, and, and they've been required to have, I mean, some of the concerns and issues that the neighbors raised required to go to Department of Public Works. They've been required to go to the police department. They've been required to get bonding for, the performance bonding for the work that they're to perform. So I think all of that gives me a comfort level that.
I agree.
Each of the boards in the town has absolutely done their job to protect the neighbors. There's certainly a hardship here in both the nature of the lot, the topography, you know, to deny them to build anything would be a taking.
That's the taking, I agree.
Right, and, and so we've got to allow them to build something. The question is, is this the minimum adjustment? And I, and I think it is.
And the board found it before.
The board found it before. It was, it was, it was a, it was a very long process, and I thank Gary for, for dragging that record in, because we can, we can then use that to support our findings here tonight. But I, I see no issue. Height variance really bothers me, you know, especially in a, in a, in a, in a site like this where you're, you've got something close to the road, the closer to the road you are, the higher it feels, right? It's like looking up at a skyscraper. But because of this lot.
It's the mathematical calculation that throws you there because of the steep drop-off.
And you're looking down, any neighbor issues, I mean, the two on either side, obviously, would have concern about height, and they did voice that. But looking down on it from the other, it's a natural.
They're still gonna be higher, yeah.
It's not high when you factor that in, the topography.
When, when, when we did, Ruth, I think you said on this, we actually had them put a flag in a tree at the peak height.
Okay, that's a great idea.
So, so we can see it in relation to the neighbors, because the neighbors are all complaining about height, and we wanted to see, and it was, it was in line, if not lower than the neighbors.
And that ended it, putting those little flags.
So.
I think this is super conservative, I think the design is smart.
I like it.
I think they've jumped through hoop after hoop to get this thing done, I think.
Woody, Woody, a couple of procedural things? We have a list of stipulations already prepared and approved for this. Can I incorporate those by reference, or do I have to go through them?
No, I drag them in. You could, you can have him incorporate in the minutes or the resolution.
Okay. I would, I would incorporate those stipulations into the minutes and.
And the decision.
And to the decision. And.
And nothing's changed, right? He was clear that no design change, no height change.
Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed.
With that, I would make a motion to approve with the stipulations previously applied to this application. I don't think we need anything additional. The only thing I wanna ask you, Woody, is there a way we can give them guidance on starting of the construction or an extended? I mean, this is clearly a complicated project. It's clearly a complicated site. Can we give, can we give a?
They just have to start in six months.
But I mean, can we extend that to a year so they don't end up in this situation again?
I think the permit is six months.
Is it a six-month permit?
It's an automatic six-month allowance for them to start actual construction with a bill department. So.
So they have to apply for an extension if it goes beyond.
They'd have to apply for a new extension.
Okay, alright.
Which we, that's, that's fine.
Which I think.
Sounds like they're.
We reopened the application, so that gives them more.
Yeah, so.
They certainly don't have a river issue with when it melts and all the freeze and fall things.
Timing is good.
So I think with shepherding them through this process, you know, if they run into a situation where they find themselves, you know, tied up because of other agencies' approvals or what it might be, if, you know, if we could get that information from them, you know, encourage them to share that with us so we know what's going on, so we can, you know, we can make better decisions around grants of extensions or not. Because I think we struggled with that the last time. It was sort of like they kinda started, they didn't start.
I think the, that this, it's the right season for starting this project, where they were maybe hoping to start a little earlier last year, so then they got into the winter. It would be, have been awful in the winter.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so I made a motion with the stipulations previously applied. Do I have a second?
Gary seconded.
Gary seconded. All in favor? Okay, you're approved. Congratulations. Have a good night.
I can't wait to see it.
I can't either. It looks fantastic.
Okay, guys, we're still on the record. Still on the record. Woody, do we have any?
Yeah, a couple things. March twentieth.
Can we let Judy go first?
Just Judy can start breaking down.
Thank you very much, Judy. Thanks for your help tonight. Okay, Ruth Ann, we're still, we're still on the agenda. So you got a couple things, Woody?
Yes, we have Mike and Gary here tonight. They were present on March twentieth.
Then we took a look.
I did hear from Jeff and Chuck that the notes were okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope you got a chance to look at Raymond Heights. Request an amendment to their approved plan.
Yeah, so what I can tell from this approved plan is, my only question is these dormers, and that's increased volume, is where's the setback line? Is that increased, I don't know this property. I don't.
I do the.
Was it during the era that I wasn't?
The dorm, the dormers are in setbacks, in the front setbacks, right?
So they're in the, so here we have them, again, we approved something and now they're coming for increased volume inside the setback, right? That's what you said? This is in.
Woody, what's the, what's the story in this? Why are we, why are we looking at this as?
It's a request to amend the plans for.
Not a prayer.
Shed dormers out of the, you can see in the photograph, a very steep pitch addition that they're building.
Yeah, so like the square window to the round window, that's one thing, but here.
Oh, it's, it's.
We couldn't staff allow that. If they were changing round window to square, okay.
That's okay, right.
But adding volume in the setback, no.
That's the problem.
The issue was the front chimney was gonna be extended up with existing bricks just being enlarged up. They decided to change it to a box shape, and at one point it was gonna be a little larger.
You know what, this.
It's gonna be wood-framed and a slight change to chimney, more big change.
This is another Raymond Heights?
Yeah, this is Raymond Heights.
This is a little broad.
We're not, we.
So the problem is the volume.
We can't, we can't, Woody, we can't do this by, I mean, Raymond Heights is such a small.
Well, they're involved in the project now. There's been a big addition that we approved. It's just they wanna amend the plans and tweak the chimney and add these floors.
When did we approve?
November.
That's cool.
Right. Or maybe earlier in the year. But in any event, the problem is, given my position in the earlier application, they're asking for more volume in that setback. I just need them to tell us what.
What changed?
What happened.
Yeah.
We found out that you actually can't stand up there because of the pitch or whatever. Let's get to that. We'd have to just say.
They need to.
Have to reapply.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't, you know, we struggle with these when people want, you know, minor changes, and the minor changes, I think, squared around, fine. The taper of the chimney probably doesn't bother me, but, but at the end of the day, where they're putting three new dormers that look at a neighbor's house that has no opportunity to make a statement about it, and.
Well, actually, just so you know, in this case, the neighbors to that side did submit an okay.
We have, but. I don't know.
I think both houses to the left.
I find it hard to do.
I just think there needs to be something on the record.
And they're coming out towards the front more?
No, it's basically over top of the previous roof line, that steep pitch.
Oh, okay.
They wanna tweak up.
But so where's the, all I need is, I can't do this, because I don't have the site plan. Where is this on the site plan? Where's the setback line? It's the same basic question, like, how much volume are you actually adding in the, in a non-conforming location? It's hard for me to tell.
I think we have that here.
And they wanna move the front door? No, they were moving the front door previously.
I think the door is all the other features of the project for the sentence.
Nice to see it's all framed out for the dormers.
Well, they left openings in there so they could do it.
This is right.
How quickly can they get it?
This is right in the middle of the project. Can we do a?
Well, May fifteenth would be.
Can we do a special meeting?
Well, that's a problem. Well, to have a hearing, we'd have to set it up with a new legal notice and publish that anyway, so we have a few weeks' preparation.
Do you think the setback line is here somewhere?
Do you have the old application?
I don't think I do, but I can get it.
The, what zoning, underlying zoning is here, like fifth acre?
I don't know. We don't have a site plan.
What's the hardship they are claiming?
I don't know what it was to begin with, so.
For the dormers.
Nothing. This is just a, just a revision.
I find it really hard to approve. I hate, I hate.
I'd like to see the height of that roof compared to the neighbors immediately. You know what I mean?
Well, we've already approved the height of that roof.
Really?
Yeah.
That's so high. It looks high. I mean, could be wrong.
The house is eight point three from the left side. Property line, fifteen feet is the number. So it's six point seven feet into the setback space on that side.
How many feet?
Outside wall of the house, where these dormers are stepped in a bit, I think.
Well, can they just step them into a conforming location?
Probably, well, I'm not sure.
What does that do to the room size?
Might be very small and only way up high.
Yeah, but, but, what did you say? It's fifteen in lieu of what?
Eight point three in lieu of fifteen.
Fifteen, so that's.
So that's side of the house where these.
But that impacts the room on the second floor.
Yeah, six point seven feet into the setback space.
So, so, I mean, that could, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the.
What is the underlying zoning? Is it fifth acre?
It's, no, it's the half-acre zone.
But none of those houses are on a half. I mean, aren't there all these long, narrow, skinny things?
Well, most of them, yeah. There was also a front setback regarding the chimney, but like I said, this.
Chimney doesn't bother me.
Operations seems.
Chimney doesn't bother me.
Not gonna fit okay. Maybe better. The brick was pretty.
If this, if this is on, this is on that front plane, they're not coming out any further? Or is that stoop now coming out further into the setback? It looks like it is. This is why a site plan would be super helpful. Right side elevation. Isn't that it there? Yeah, it's coming out. Here, yeah, Woody, it's extending further from the profit.
Oh, here we go.
That's the right side, so we're looking.
I was curious about.
And there's the new front stoop.
This peak compared to, like, what are we looking at?
Is that, is that as of right?
Talk about a tight little neighborhood.
Right.
To my knowledge, only changes from your previous approval. Not the porch, not the landing, not the other stuff.
But even the.
I don't have a survey.
But even the roof, Woody, looks like it's stepped out.
Compared to the previous design?
Well, I don't know what the previous design was, but why would you have a bump out there?
Well, look to the other side.
I liked it. I was like, alright, do everyone.
They're taking out the front door.
They're moving the front door around.
Basically sliding a little front line across there.
But I don't know where that's.
I think this whole section bumped out, though.
Yeah, they're wrapping it around, but I don't know where the setback lines are.
I think it's on.
I can tell you what the front setback is. Basically approved twenty-five point nine instead of forty feet for the front setback.
But it's. Does it line up with the house next door?
Pretty close, yeah.
So the front will line up. It's not as if this is sticking out in the road. Okay.
But they're coming out further.
What's the distance between that and that?
That's my point, is why can't they just talk?
Is that?
I don't know.
So we're only talking about the whole problem?
I don't know.
How much of the dormer is a problem? How much of the front stoop is a problem?
I don't know. That's why, I mean, the only other suggestion, Woody, would be to have them prepare a site plan and submit it, and.
Do we have, do we have something in two weeks?
Yeah, we do.
They give us a word, we have a meeting on the, whatever, two weeks from today.
Twenty-four or something?
Alright, so we can.
So why don't they? Ask them for additional information by the twenty-fourth, to see if we can do it administratively then.
Yeah, I can see just where the setback line's falling.
Okay. Woody, I know you had zoning Board of Appeals, powers and duties.
We'll continue this to.
Oh, this is, this is just, this is just for information. This is the.
Yeah, what's included in your packets was from that conference. It was at Wesley.
Hey, guys.
No, it was here, though.
Sorry.
There was one here also.
Did you see this?
Yes, I did. Now, is this the result of the meeting we have with the attorney, or is this just?
No, this was part of a seminar.
This was a seminar that none of us could attend.
Right.
But I thought the materials would be good. I didn't have a chance to look through it, so have you looked at it?
I started to look through it. It's kinda heavy, really.
I'll take a look at it. It's probably, it looks like it's got a lot of.
It's kinda heavy, right?
I went, I've gone three times with Jeremy that.
But what we might.
Couldn't do it this year.
Maybe what we do is, is we read through it, and then we'll kinda give some ideas.
Yeah, I think you wanna do, see if we can get some information on that.
What are you, what are you thinking? Like, information that we adjust our rules and regulations based on state recommendations?
It's really standard of how we apply and answer certain questions.
It's little things like Gary's point. He came into us with an application that required the minimum adjustment. Now you want, three months later, you want more.
So this may give some color on how to handle this situation.
That was a very good point, Gary. That was an excellent point.
Well done, Gary.
Well, I mean, disappointment in the use of a property can hardly constitute practical difficulty.
Right.
I'm disappointed they didn't have the pool.
He just went to page three.
But let's say, though, I mean, just for argument's sake, let's say the castle built that house.
I don't think we should do this.
Yeah, we're still on.
We're still on.
Yeah.
So we continue that, Woody. Sorry, guys. We're keeping packages for no, and.
Castle.
Castle. Okay. With that, there's nothing further on the agenda, Woody?
Can I pass something along for you?
Sure.
Is it food?